After I told you it's like tonight, I'll give you a call. I'll call you tomorrow.
Yeah, cuz I want him to, cuz I was worried. Board of Education meeting is hereby called to order. We will start with the act of reverence and prejudice allegiance to the flag led by our student rep, Ms. Sophie Galliver. Cis of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. We have some minutes from our previous scheduled meetings. March 22nd Business Meeting, March 28 Charter School Hearing, March 29 Special Meeting, April 3 Special Meeting, and April 23 Special Meeting, and the April 18 Budget Hearing. Members received all these resolutions via board docs. I entertain a motion to approve. Your second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. The ayes have it.
I'm gonna say President has no to. Think I was only at April 23th Special Meeting, and I don't think I was even at the April 18 Budget Hearing. So I only say yes to
April 23rd.
April 23rd and no to the other.
Alright, thank you. Next up, I'm gonna ask my colleagues to join me down front. We are gonna recognize the East High School Girls Basketball Team. Are they in the house?
Yes, they are! They're in the house!
April 4th. Mind handing this out? So, we are gonna, we have the honor of being able to recognize the East High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team who made not just the City School District but all of Monroe County proud with their great accomplishment in breaking history. They made history here this past year, and we wanted to recognize them for that. And as most of you know, the East High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team were extremely successful this year, winning both regional and state titles. So give that a round of applause. And as I said, this is a first, not only, this is not, this is a first not only for East High School, but as far as we can determine, no other girls team from the city schools have ever made it this far. So again, more history. Tonight, the board, we want to recognize the team under the guidance of their coach, cuz we know how important the coaches are, right? Without a strong coach, you can't, you can't do much without a strong coach. I know that, that's, that's in business, and schools, and sports, and you have to have a strong coach in order to have a strong team, because attitude is a reflection of leadership. And so I wanna also recognize the coaches, Mr. Mario Velasquez, Assistant Coaches, Mrs. Lisa Tichetti, and Ken Sutton. And I want the coaches to come up, as we, as we call the names of the players, to present certificates to them, because I think that the coaches should be up here just as much as us as board members. And I saw this coaching action over at Wilson, when they coached, when I watched them play Wilson, and I can tell you, they were involved, and he's no joke as a coach. Let me also say that you need a strong community to support the school. So I don't know if Annabelle's here. I don't, I don't, is he here? Alright, yeah. So I mean, you gotta cultivate a strong team. You know, I'm a Wilson Wildcat, and I tell you, I think Annabelle forgets that, you know, the Board of Education oversees like all the staff and stuff. He talks so much junk on a regular basis about what East was gonna do to Wilson.
I got your back.
And I would also note Commissioner Elliott's wearing her purple for the, for the East High School Girls. So, first up, I wanna call up Rose Ayella. A little bit about Rose. She's a junior, first year with the team, transfer from Virginia, Rochester League, Player of the Year, First Team All-State, Regional, Regional All-Tournament Team, All-Greater Rochester Team, MVP of Sectionals, and MVP of State Tournament. So give it up for Rose Ayella. Stay up there, Rose. Stay, stay up, stay up there next, next to the commissioner. Stay up as you come up. Next up is Aleah Dunbar, who's also a captain, a senior, has played varsity five years since the 8th grade, two-time Rochester League Player of the Year, two-times Greater Rochester Pick, First Team All-State, will attend Casper College in Wyoming, Division 1 Junior College. Renetta Fordham, Senior, has played varsity four years and hasn't decided on a school yet. Congratulations, Aleah. I mean, Renetta. Camia Goss, freshman, first year with the team. Taylor Hosby, sophomore, first year with the team, and I like this, I like this, transfer from Aquinas. Gabriella Howell, sophomore, first year with the team. Carly Jones, Senior, has played four years, Carly. Tyra Jones, Captain, Senior, first year with the team, transfer from Russian Rieta, Second Team All-Greater Rochester Team, All-Tournament Team for Section 5, Sixth Team All-State. Congratulations. Gamika Manor, Junior, first year with the team. Deja Spinks, Junior, first year with the team. Natasha White, Senior, has played varsity for four years. Natasha? She's absent, okay. We'll give that to her. And then Janelle Young, is Janelle here? Senior, has played four years, and we can keep watching her cuz she's going to Monroe Community College. So hopefully she'll keep playing there. I just wanna say that what really impressed a lot of us... I just wanna say what impressed us, Coach, with your team, and coaches with the team in the East High School Girls, is the fact that so many of your players, it's the first year, playing with the team. And I don't know, maybe you can write a book on how you were able to get people who, and this is for any organization, how you get people who are playing for the first time, first year in an organization, to be able to pull together and then win a state championship. That is absolutely unbelievable, and all of you should be extremely proud of that. I'm sure that that's unprecedented. It's unprecedented in this district, because it's the first time this has ever happened with an all-girls varsity team. So again, let's just give them a great round of applause. And lastly, I'll just say, I don't know if any, if there's any parents of the players, if there's any parents of the players that are here, or even if you aren't here, if any parents are here, please feel free to stand up. But even if the parents aren't here, I just wanna say that the support of parents are absolutely critical in sports. Coming from a family where everyone was good at sports except for me, I know my parents were always actively involved, and you can't do it without the support of a loving family, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, sisters, brothers. So we wanna thank them also for allowing us to share in your children's success, because we know that this would not have been able to happen had it not been for you allowing us to watch them and have them play in our school. So thank you so very much to the families. And thank you again. Oh, thank you. And Coach, before we go, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add before we, before we, before we sit down. I know, I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Yes, I'd just like to thank everyone that came out tonight, and thanks to the board for recognizing these young ladies for their accomplishment this year. It was a great year, and again, I'd like to thank all you ladies for your hard work and dedication this year. Thanks.
Camera there, coaches superintendent, if you can, if you can just get in a photo, girls, if we can arrange ourselves, and so we can get a quick photo, because this is a, this is a momentous occasion. And I want, and this is the type of photo I want in my time capsule. So... Shorties in the front. We got our photographer right there. Jose, I think, Jose? Alright, there we go. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Just let me say again, thank you to East High School. I'll tell you, I've been on the board, serving with Commissioner Elliott for a while, and I never had Commissioner Elliott call me on a Saturday to give me the play-by-play of the game. So I mean, you need to understand how much this is excited. The district, and the Board of Education, and the entire district in the city of Rochester. So again, thank you and congratulations to East High School. We're gonna move to speakers addressing an agenda item. Each speaker will have three minutes. I would ask that you conclude your remarks, please, when you are, when you are, when you hear the beeping from the timer. And I'm gonna call up our first list of speakers. I have a list somewhere. Oh, I got it. Thank you. Our first speaker, we always put our students first, and our first speaker will be Patricia Taylor. Is Patricia here? Patricia Taylor? If you're here, raise your hand, Patricia. Oh, there she is. Okay, come on up to the podium, and then Patricia will be followed by Anthony. Is Anthony Colquitt here? Mr. Colquitt? Come on up, Mr. Colquitt. You can stand right next to Patricia, right next to Patricia, and then after Patricia, you'll be on. And just say, and also, is Sabrina Campbell here? Sabrina, you can come on up too, and you'll be after Mr. Colquitt. And just tell us your name, what school you go to, what grade, and then you can start with your remarks.
My name is Patricia Taylor. I go to Charlotte High School. I'm in the 12th grade. Good evening. I'm a student in the Hillside Works Scholarship Connection Program, and I want to thank you for your support. I have been a part of the Hillside program since the 10th grade, and have found it to be a miraculous program that prides itself on all those who take part on building the students who choose to take the initiative to broaden their knowledge of the future. I believe the things our advocates do for us are beyond mere satisfaction. These people are patient, kind, and firm. They probably want us to graduate more than we're capable of realizing we can, and they don't fail to let us know. Tutoring programs and constantly keeping up with us to make sure there is nothing more in this world they could possibly do are just a few thing, key things in their daily agendas. And they don't have to. No one has to spend their lives fighting to make sure that everything we do, everything, that we do everything possible so that we succeed, but they make our futures first priority. Anyone could recommend going to tutoring or suggest we keep our grades up, but the thing is, I don't think that would be good enough in their eyes. As students, we are constantly falling on our faces, and they let us know that just because we happen to fall in the mud doesn't mean we can't wash off in the waterfall. Without this program, I would have never believed that college was possible. The only option given to, that the only option given to me was the only one available, a mediocre student and a mediocre career. But I'm not mediocre. They've helped me, helped me to gain my own perception of what really is out there, and there's so much more. I look at my grades throughout my high school career, and I feel ecstatic and shocked because I never thought I could ever rise above satisfactory. Through Hillside Works Scholarship, I am an employee at Brockport Wegmans. I've participated in community service programs, enrichments, and the summer academy. My advocate's name is Ms. Anagen. She's never in the years that I've participated in the program let me down, never gave up or put me down. She's constantly, she constantly tests my capability academically and socially. I see now that I can, that they can tear me down a million times, but I will never bring myself to admit defeat. And I'm here today to proclaim my appreciation for her and her career. Right before your eyes, she's assisting me to become more confident in the public eye and not to be afraid. Being up here is only one small way I can show my appreciation, because I know I can never truly show my fullest gratitude. I hope you see the significance of this program as I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, thank you, Patricia. Anthony Colquitt?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Colquitt. I'm a senior at Northwest College Preparatory High School. I joined the Hillside program my 9th grade year at high school. I didn't really know what the program was about, so I joined because of my friends. And after I enrolled in it, I found out that's a great way to meet new people. Some of the benefits I've got from my advocate is I always have someone to talk to. She's always around whenever I need someone. She keeps me on track schoolwork and basketball-wise. She provided me tutoring through the Encompass program. She helped me become more outspoken, and she helped me stay on high honor since starting. Some rewards from Hillside is that I went through the Youth Employment Training Academy, and I'm now employed at Twilight Paw Wegmans. I went on three college tours, and now I'm getting an opportunity to go on a trip to Washington DC with the Young Men's Group. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Anthony. Sabrina Campbell?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabrina Campbell. I'm a senior at East High School. I'm also an active member of the Student Leadership Congress. I believe that the SLC is a wonderful asset to our community and to our district. At yesterday's meeting, we spoke about our wonderful superintendent, Dr. Vargas, whom recently became our permanent superintendent. Congratulations, Dr. Vargas, on this wonderful achievement. We then continued to speak about our trip to Washington DC, which will be held on June 24th throughout till the 29th. We also touched on the topic of bullying and the passings of our very own student, Lereet Butler, who formerly attended East High School, and the passing of Trayvon Martin. And my colleague, my colleague Gwen Smith will elaborate.
Hello, I'm Gwen Scott, and I will just be elaborating on a few of the topics that we've been discussing in SLC. We have talked about how bullying leads to more serious problems such as fighting and suicides, and how the internet sometimes fuels those problems such as the use of Twitter, Facebook, and MySpace. We have also discussed ways of improving these problems, and as well as a number of many others that face the children in the school district, do they? Even though Sabrina and myself are both seniors, we care just as much as all the other members of SLC on how making the school district a better place to learn and grow. We want the future students of the Rochester City School District to prosper just as much as we have as we continue on our journeys to college. Thank you.
Regina McNair?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking today. First of all, I wanna congratulate the young ladies at East High School for the successful academic achievement that they made. Congratulations, Rochester. I wanna speak about the selection for the superintendent. I'm a parent of one child in the Rochester School District. I've been fighting this for a couple of months now. I've been in Rochester for six years, and in the six years that I've been here, I've never been impressed with the Rochester City School District for how things have been run. My first year when I was here, I probably gonna repeat myself, but I'm gonna say it again. My son was never given any books to take home, to reference to, for me to find out exactly what's going on in his class, and I brought that up several times. I've even made the attempt of possibly purchasing his books for his curriculum, and the person that I asked about that, they thought that that was absurd. So these are some of the things that disturbed me as a parent as to how this Rochester City School District is actually being run, and things like that. They start from the head and fall down. And not exactly sure who the superintendent was then. I'm sure he did the job the best he can, but in following and coming up to where he is now, I kinda got a little bit involved. And some of the things that I've seen have been going on, it is very disturbing. It's really disturbing. And I know that a lot of the teachers, and I'm not blaming them, because they have to follow protocol, and their instructions come from higher up. So we have to hold those that are higher up accountable for exactly what's happening in our school district and with our children. And they're not getting a quality education. They're failing by the droves. Now, when they started with this new project to open up this alternate school, you fail from the very beginning because you're trying to get children to graduate. How do you try to get children to graduate and those that are already out of school to bring back when you have already failed them? So once somebody is out of someplace, they're not gonna be willing to come back. But my thing is that you have to start at the early childhood development stage in order to get them to enter high school to wanna graduate. So you failed them from the very beginning. This, and this, this search for the superintendent, we've been trying to get involved and ask some questions and ask for parent involvement, and you have, you have ignored us to the highest degree of disrespect for any parent I have ever seen, and you, you know, you lack integrity in the things that you have done and the way that you have treated this parent. And we feel very disrespected. And now that we have been voicing our opinions, you know, you wanna call the police on us, and you have gone so far, and I'ma say it, and I'ma say it publicly, you have gone so far as to threaten my life and my livelihood for someone calling my husband's boss to tell me, tell him to tell me to stop what it is that I'm doing. So apparently, I must have been on the right track in what it is that I was saying in order for somebody to threaten my livelihood and to go, and to go over my husband's head to call his boss. So this, this whole process with this, this superintendent search was very unfair to us, and I am a community leader, and he talked about, you talked about going out to my community. You've never stepped foot in my community, because half the people in my congregation, on my block, and on my surrounding blocks don't even know what was happening and what was going on. So what community did you actually go out to and to reach what people? And I was here in the forefront, and you just disregard me very blatantly. And I feel very unappreciated as a parent, and I'm a taxpayer, and I should have been heard. And something that I said, and I make very sense, I'm a very educated parent, some of the things that I said make very good sense. I don't just come before you and not know what I'm talking about, and I have my own ammunition that I could bring to show you that I can fight with, and it be a fair fight.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McNair. Howard Eagle?
You can always tell when people are doing wrong because they bring the police around. It's very discouraging to walk in the building and see the chief of security going over the list, speaker's list with the police. And first thing that pops in my mind is either one of them even live in this community. We know their children don't go to school here if they do have children. Dr. Vargas, you know that we don't support you as the permanent superintendent of this school district, but it's not personal. I was thinking about you today. I remember the day I met you at Josh Lothian Middle School, in Ms. Carleton's office, I think shortly before or after you got your job as a counselor. It's not personal. You know, we go way back, but we, there's nothing that anybody could do to convince us that supposedly one of the most reputable search firms in the nation searched all of the United States of America, and that the person that they found in all of the United States who's most qualified for this position is you. We, we don't believe that. However, it's clear that the power of leaders in this town wants you to be the superintendent, and just as we've said to you before, since that's the case, we're willing, courageous, to work with you, the board, and anybody else who's serious about developing concrete goals, strategies, and tactics to improve education for our children and families. And so, since the board says one of your strong points is your community involvement and so forth, you'll probably get an email from us tomorrow inviting you to come to a meeting. And so let's, let's get to work and do what we have to do. Now, the board, you ought to be really ashamed of yourselves. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves. And I gotta say, you in particular, Mary Adams, you are, in my view, the biggest political sellout in the history of local politics. It's just... It's just unbelievable. It was only a few short months ago that you were sitting at our table telling us how you would never support this man, talking about him like a dog. And so, you think that you can write some bony, half-baked rationalization for why you changed your mind, and we're going to accept that like we're stupid? It was just a few months ago that we were saying together that this boy thinks we're stupid. Now, you're part of the club that thinks we're stupid, and to believe that you would have the unmitigated gall, the audacity, the intestinal fortitude to try to chastise black ministers, unbelievable. And I hope that they blister you politically, and they certainly can count on me for any support that I can lend to them. I think that this is a sad day for the children and the parents of the Rochester City School District. So what we're hoping is that we could take these lemons that we got and make some lemonade. Let me stop, let me say this one more time, and I'm done. Dr. Vargas and the board, anybody else who's serious about working on concrete goals and strategies and tactics, agreed upon goals, strategies, and tactics in an equal partnership, not this kind of thing where you just dictate to us, because we bring something to the game too. We bring a lot. In fact, we bring more than some of you. That we're willing and anxious to work with you, and we'll be sending Dr. Vargas an email, if not tonight, tomorrow, inviting you to a meeting so we can sit down and not sip tea and coffee and so forth, but roll our sleeves up and talk about what we're really going to do.
I would like some coffee, though.
Well, you bring it. Bring the coffee. You drink water. Drink lots of water. So I don't care what you drink, but we're not getting together to sip tea and coffee. We want to talk about what we can do to help you and the board and whoever else bring about improvement for our children. This is not a game. This is life and death stuff we're talking here.
So, thank you, Mr. Eagle. Oliveen Adams? Ms. Adams here?
Right here. I'm going to kind of pick up where he left off, and same thing, I'm going to address Mary, because she's the only person that I know that ever had a direct link to any child anywhere in the district. I'm not saying that any of you did or didn't, but I just personally didn't see it. But I personally witnessed with her interaction and involvement with kids. So to see this swinging door action is just really appalling, and I had a response to her message to the community as to why she chose to go through that swinging door. But it's a good thing that doors swing, because usually how you start is how you finish. So I can almost bet that in the near future, she'll probably most likely go back through the same door that she went through, realizing that it was a wrong choice. So I'm just going to read what I sent to her, which she probably already read, but I'm going to do it publicly what I had sent to her. So you had made a comment that it didn't make any sense to reverse this because we pretty much can't reverse this, but the power flourishing to stop it did not happen from day one. It was a sound decision to not use that power to stop the madness once again. So the opportunity was available for you to stop it, but you chose otherwise, and it is disturbing, especially when you made it clear that you do not support this man and made your reasons clearly with supported facts as to why you did it and nobody else should, and they were right. So I don't understand the fear, though. Fear comes from lack of not knowing or not being fully educated on something, and you definitely have fear in something. And instead of overcoming those fears, the decision was to lay down and get down versus standing up and fighting. The attitude is, aha, this is what we did. Now, you guys have to just deal with it, except for one thing. We are not going to deal with it, and we do not have to. In fact, in fact, let the truth be told, these are our kids, and they don't have to be in your schools. You are privileged to be sitting there and getting a paycheck. Without us, you would not be there, and the same way each one of you got there is the same way we will take you out. So with that said, it has been a trained behavior in this community that the community of parents are supposed to shut up, join bandwagons, you know, do little horse and pony shows like it's the norm, especially when there's money involved, because that's what every single one of you is about. Those chains have been broken, and I'm going to tell you that the mountains are going to move. Even if you are too weak to do it yourself, we will be doing it for you, okay? As leaders, be careful what you say, because we remember the words that you say. And I'm your niece, but I'm not a sellout. My ancestors' blood runs through my veins. It ain't happening. Not today, not tomorrow, not from anybody. And all of y'all need to be ashamed of yourselves, especially the ones that come from right here in the urban, in the middle, in the hood, in the city. Y'all are sellouts. God bless y'all souls, because y'all are going to need it.
Tim Adams?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Tim Adams. I'm a city resident. I'm a member of the Community Education Task Force. Some of our members have already spoken. For the folks in the room who are hearing some of this for the first time, it's not a surprise. For one, we've been following this issue officially for over a year now, since Bizarba's run out of town because of the madness he brought to our district. And so, we've been following these issues. We can't backtrack, and we can't give that whole history, but we know what we're talking about right now. And when we make an accusation, it's on us to defend that accusation, such as an unfair process, such as a lack of knowledge and experience, speaking about Dr. Vargas. These kinds of things, we're called on, we're put to task to defend that position. We do it. But when we say this process is unfair, Commissioner Evans, all you have to say is, no, 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 it's fair. We had those forums, remember that? We had those forums that we had less people than were in this room in those forums, and all of them saying things like, we need a master teacher. We need someone who is experienced in this role. We need this and that and the other, and none of them are encompassed in Dr. Vargas. So I want to speak to the board directly, because for one, usually I just kind of talk to the audience, because I know, and my experience has told me that I'm not listened to often, we aren't listened to often. But to this point, I really want to make it, because I've read in media, you guys specifically, President Evans, talking about how we only spent $40,000 on the search, and I want to know, did we really only spend $40,000? Can there be an audit done on exactly how much money was given to Ray and Associates? I'm talking the travel, the whining and dining, those kinds of things that were not necessarily in their contract. And because they didn't actually produce anyone, except to our knowledge, one candidate who was less qualified, if we assume this is a worthwhile process, less qualified than Dr. Vargas, then they actually didn't produce anything. They didn't follow up with their end of the deal. We just wasted $40,000. What's up with that? And how do we get that back? I mean, we had to disrupt meetings to tell you, don't even hire these people, and now here we are. This is, I've been sitting at work all day trying to figure out what I can possibly say tonight. This is out of left field. I can't even believe, a six to one vote, especially. After Bizarb, you guys are going down this road again. Unbelievable. One last point regarding, just a side note, I was told by, well, we were told by Ms. Adams, that one of the things she was going to do, at least if my memory is correct, was she was going to propose a resolution to extend this time from three minutes to five minutes, and I'm wondering, has that been done yet? I know you guys can't answer. Maybe someone can get back to me on that. Be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Glynni Williams? Mark Friedman?
All right, my name's Mark Friedman. I'm a Rochester City School District employee, and I'm also a member of the Community Education Task Force. And obviously, we've got this history, we've got this campaign knowledge from a grassroots perspective, very close and very personal in terms of learning what we see is a lack of integrity within this process, and I could echo the similar concerns. One thing that I did want to emphasize is, as harsh as this may sound, we are genuine when we say that we want to find collaborative, cooperative ways in which we can work, find common ground, if that's possible, and we're eager to find that ground. One question that was swirling around the community, which I think is worth articulating, is ministers and others within the community had had this ongoing, and it just recently came up today, but this question had been swirling around, you know, RTA slash Urbansky controlling this process, influencing the board, right? And I can't articulate that any better than what was said from the ministers today, and that is a real concern. But that's only a portion of what's going on here, right? And it's a critical portion, but it's only a portion, because I'm curious how this dynamic, I mean, studying politics and the political analysis, it's important, how is this dynamic going to get balanced in terms of a staunch longtime ally of David Gant also building a relationship with RTI? I'm curious, and I'm studying politics, I want to know how that can be done. Because if anybody who knows anything about the politics in the towns knows that that's a very, very, I would argue, borderline impossible balance to bring about. But we're curious to see where this goes, and we're going to be watching closely and still organizing as always, and we're in the next stage of the struggle now, so we look forward to meeting with you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Thank you, speakers. Did we get that sound noise fixed, Madam Clerk? All right, we're going to take like a 30-second recess. There's this noise in the room that is interrupting the audio for our live feed that we need to have corrected, so if we can get that corrected, Madam Clerk, that'd be great. We'll take a 30-second, maybe two-minute recess while we get that corrected.
I got myself on.
I unplugged her already.
Good morning. Yeah, but not here. I ain't having it here. They got the.
It's gone down.
I don't like it. I don't like it.
Oh, okay.
I bet you say that to all the guys. Or bleak, or women. I won't tell.
I know. I support the army because I.
Check one-two.
Test one-two.
Test one-two, test one-two, check one-two, check one-two.
Keep it moving.
Okay. All right, we got the audio fixed. We got the audio fixed. Commissioner White is wearing a Damon City campus sweatshirt today. I got a U of R one for you. Did I tell you?
No, you didn't.
I do.
I will wear that next.
You, I will get it to you. We will commence with the rest of our meeting. We got our audio fixed. Thank you. Is there a motion to move up Resolution Number?
Are we going to do it now? Yes. Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to recommend that we move Resolution 723 to the forefront in light of our press and people who are here who want to know the vote.
Okay.
So I make that motion.
All right. If there are no objections to that, we'll take up, we shuffle our agenda, and we'll take up Resolution 723 now. So I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 723?
It's been moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in discussion, in second discussion on Resolution 723?
Mr. President, yes, I'd like to, if this is appropriate, just sort of thank Dr. Vargas for the work that he's done over the last year. Mr. President, he came into a very difficult situation, and he brought calm to this district. I have learned over this year to respect him even more highly than I had before based on the work that he's done. He has shown that he is committed to our children, doing the right thing about our, the right things towards our children, and in addition to wanting to be a person who collaborates, he also makes the decisions that he needs to do, needs to make on behalf of our children, and that's what I have appreciated about Dr. Vargas for a very long time. Now, I also have to say that, as I've told Dr. Vargas, he was not my choice for the permanent superintendent, and he knew that going in, but the democratic process has won out, and my candidate was not a part of this. And so, given that Dr. Vargas, who's shown that he can be an amazing leader of this district. when he unveiled his budget for this year, that it is a values-driven document, that budgets are inherently a statement of our values. And given what he knows about cultures of expectation and the expectations of this board, I expect that you're going to find that this is, this is not going to be a cakewalk. This is not going to be a culture of lowered expectations, but rather, you're going to want to reach for a higher level of professionalism and excellence in the work that you submit. You're going to want to, and that's the good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Crute.
Thank you, President Evans. This is a historic day. I think it's not easy to go through a process that we went through, and you know, I really have to commend the board, I have to commend, and more importantly, a very interesting process. If you think about having 21 people sit around a table and try and drive this process over, what, seven, eight or nine months of meetings, and having people from the community. And you know, although there's some criticisms out there in terms of, it could have been more, more open, more transparent, I don't know how much more open, how much more transparent we could have made this process. But I think with the leadership of our President Malik Evans, he did a phenomenal job of just keeping us on task and keeping us focused. So you know, kudos to you and your work. You know, one of the things that people have been criticizing us about is, you know, making a choice with, in terms of having somebody who doesn't have the leadership and doesn't have the experience. And you know, the first year is always a great year for anybody in a new job. But I sort of have to look at the other side of that. We've had a year to really look at Dr. Vargas, and I mean, look at things that, you know, some of the subtle things, his ability to communicate with people. We've seen him frustrated. We've seen him, you know, get his back up on several occasions when he felt that what he had to say was extremely important. We've seen him work with staff, we've seen him work out of the community. So there's a number of different things we have seen that has, you know, at least for me personally, has assured me that we have made a great choice in a superintendent. But you know, also allows the ability to be able to find out what some of the weaknesses are. And I got to tell you, over this past year, I can't point to any one area that I think that Dr. Vargas messed up on. There are some things that, you know, that got tweaked and need to be tweaked and things like that, but, and any, when there's such complexity, you know, it's very hard to get it all right all the time. But he has done a great job, and a convincing job. And if, I can't tell you the number of people out there in the community, businesses, folks at churches, my family, people who are, you know, ask, you know, saying, you know, "You guys made a wise decision." And so, I'm glad that we were able to do this. However, there is a big however here. Let us not make a mistake to think that Dr. Vargas is going to take and hoist this system, this district on his back and shoulders, and think that he alone will make the changes that are going to be needed in this district. And I think if anybody thinks that that's the case, that the answers all lie in his abilities, I think you're making a very big mistake. He can lead, he can help, he can, he can cajole change, but it really comes from folks. It comes from teachers, it comes from administrators, it comes from community, it comes from us as a board. And he has said it over and over again, that this is really an issue, that this community has to embrace. The education of our children has to be a number-one priority in this community. I believe he can lead us down that path, but he can't do it alone. And the last thing in terms of his dedication, you know, on a personal level, Bolton bleeds education, he bleeds kids. If you've known him for as many years as many of us have known him, you've known that's the case. He doesn't wear a tie with kids on it because he doesn't have any other ties. Right? Sometimes I wonder if he doesn't, but, but that is so symbolic of what he really thinks in terms of educating our children. So he bleeds this stuff, he feels it. There are times when we, that I have been personally concerned about him because he's looking a little ragged at times. I know the staff has seen it too, when he's working himself too hard. But I've also seen the staff ragged too, so I know he's working the staff hard too. So you know, works both ways. But again, I'm looking forward to working with you, Dr. Vargas, and if there's anything that I can do to push the, push the agenda of this district to get our kids educated, you can definitely count on me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adams.
First, I'd like to say that it's no secret that I've been very critical of the process. But even as a new board member, there is a deep responsibility in order to function and serve the community, to operate in reality, and to use judgment, and make decisions based on what is in front of us and what is the best decision for our families and our children. I came to this position with a very deep critique of public education, especially urban public education, and I really see urban, urban public education as under attack across the United States. And we're in truly crisis situation, and it demands radical reform, radical redirection, and not the kind of reform being pushed by Arnie Duncan, Race to the Top, and that kind of so-called accountability regime that is cluttered with junk science. So that's the perspective I'm coming from, and that informed my critique of Dr. Vargas and my concerns about whether he would be a revolutionary enough leader to turn us to where we really need to go. Some of the critics earlier tonight were correct, that earlier I did not feel that I would be able to vote for Dr. Vargas. And in fact, during one of our meetings during the first month of my service on the board, when I was challenging him on some issues, he was so respectful and cordial and nice, I was feeling, you know, knowing that I was probably not going to be able to vote for him for permanent superintendency, I felt that I had to tell him directly, and I did do that. I did tell him during my first, first month of service that I probably would not be able to vote for him despite really liking him. Yet, here we are, and here's reality, and clearly, among the choices that were brought to us, not just the one candidate who ended up coming, but among all of the candidates who we had an opportunity to review or to speak with, there's no doubt that he is, he is the best candidate to serve our community. One last word, and I wrote this in a, in a statement. My real concern is for especially the staff and other leaders in the community who are happy about Dr. Vargas becoming permanent superintendent because he makes us feel good, or because he has made a culture shift, he's made us more comfortable, feeling better about the work that we do. That's absolutely important. But we are in a crisis. We do need radical change. We do need to challenge, not just superficially, but we need to challenge the system. And that's going to mean challenging Dr. Vargas, and it's going to mean supporting him when he's on the right track. So I know that I will commit to working hard, and I will commit to supporting you, Dr. Vargas, when you're on the right track. I will continue to challenge, we'll get tired, but the goal is to help our district and to help our children. So I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Commissioner White.
I will be voting no tonight. However, my vote has nothing to do with Dr. Vargas's character, his commitment, or his credentials to perform this job. And in fact, just as many of you believe in his character and commitment, so do I. But I also believe urban districts, urban communities are entitled to expect not only every quality that Dr. Vargas has, but the qualities and experiences that are necessary to lead a troubled district, like teaching, like significant budgetary experience, and lastly, experience in supervising on the largest municipal operations in this county. I believe, as they say, we can have our cake and eat it too. I believe we are entitled as urban people to have it all, not just some. You also need to know that my vote seriously reflects deep concerns that I have about this process. A process that told the community over a year ago that all potential candidates would not be allowed, would not be allowed to apply for the interim, for the permanent position. Changing those rules was, of course, the board's right, but that doesn't mean the decision we are about to make tonight is right. For example, I personally spoke to one out-of-state sitting superintendent candidate who decided, after speaking to me, after I had spoken to my colleagues, that applying for the interim position would not be in his best interest, because in fact, he'd be giving up his permanent job to do so. Instead, quite reasonably and rationally, bless you, he decided to wait and apply for the permanent position. Additionally, you will not convince me that there are not internal candidates, many of whom are also certified and equally committed to Rochester, that would have applied for the interim position had they known that the interim could have applied for the permanent position. The interim, Dr. Vargas, did apply, did agree he would not apply for the permanent position, but yet was allowed to apply. They did not, they did not apply, and they did not get the chance that he did. They probably asked themselves, as you should now, what credible chance would they have to apply after the interim was now eligible to become permanent, as he was now their boss? What risk, what rational risk were they willing to assume to jeopardize their present occupation at the risk that the interim, who was now applying for the job himself? We did not give them a fair chance, and thereby deny ourselves, our children, our communities, our families, and our staff that we represent a fair opportunity either. But what makes this especially troublesome is that we have not modeled the appropriate behavior that we ask of our children and our staff. Our own values policy, 4311.2, which mimics notions of fairness and equal opportunity found in the United States Constitution, that we teach to our children. Our Constitution and our values policy talks about equality, which means, and I quote the values policy, "That all individuals will have equal access to available opportunities, and conditions of equity will be established to ensure equal opportunity." Talks about due process are rampant in our values policy. It talks about the fact that we, quote, "require equal application of procedures." That's our value policy. Equal application of procedures as a means of ensuring a fair hearing for all individuals. Finally, our values policy requires that we not only teach values, but that we model them in our own behavior and conduct. By changing the rules of the application process after applicant's expectations and conduct had been set in stone, we did not model the appropriate behavior that we expect from our students and our staff. By approving this resolution today, we are saying to our students that it's okay to say one thing and change your mind and do another. Sadly, we cannot hide our hypocrisy from our community, our parents, staff, or families. For example, we tell our students that rules regarding athletic eligibility don't change during the athletic season, right? Nor are they manipulated to meet the needs, or they shouldn't be, or profiles of individual athletes during the middle of the season. When parents complain to us as board members or to our staff about their son or daughter being kicked off the team, we tell them these rules of eligibility are set at the beginning of the game, or at the beginning of the season, and that these rules must be applied today. That's what we tell our children. This community has also heard, many of us, from this DS and from within this district, complain.
For example, I personally spoke to one out-of-state sitting superintendent candidate who decided, after speaking to me, after I had spoken to my colleagues, that applying for the interim position would not be in his best interests. Because in fact, he'd be giving up his permanent job to do so. Instead, quite reasonably and rationally, bless you, he decided to wait and apply for the permanent position. Additionally, you will not convince me that there are not internal candidates, many of whom are also certified and equally committed to Rochester, that would have applied for the interim position had they known that the interim could have applied for the permanent position. The interim, Dr. Vargas, did apply, did agree he would not apply for the permanent position, but yet was allowed to apply. They did not, they did not apply, and they did not get the chance that he did. They probably asked themselves, as you should now, what credible chance would they have to apply after the interim was now eligible to become permanent, as he was now their boss? What risk, what rational risk were they willing to assume to jeopardize their present occupation at the risk that the interim, who was now applying for the job himself? We did not give them a fair chance, and thereby deny ourselves, our children, our communities, our families, and our staff that we represent a fair opportunity either. But what makes this especially troublesome is that we have not modeled the appropriate behavior that we ask of our children and our staff. Our own values policy, 4311.2, which mimics notions of fairness and equal opportunity found in the United States Constitution, that we teach to our children. Our Constitution and our values policy talks about equality, which means, and I quote the values policy, that all individuals will have equal access to available opportunities and conditions of equity will be established to ensure equal opportunity. Talks about due process are rampant in our values policy. It talks about the fact that we, quote, "require equal application of procedures." That's our value policy. Equal application of procedures as a means of ensuring a fair hearing for all individuals. Finally, our values policy requires that we not only teach values, but that we model them in our own behavior and conduct. By changing the rules of the application process after applicant's expectations and conduct had been set in stone, we did not model the appropriate behavior that we expect from our students and our staff. By approving this resolution today, we are saying to our students that it's okay to say one thing and change your mind and do another. Sadly, we cannot hide our hypocrisy from our community, our parents, staff, or families. For example, we tell our students that rules regarding athletic eligibility don't change during the athletic season, right? Nor are they manipulated to meet the needs, or they shouldn't be, or profiles of individual athletes during the middle of the season. When parents complain to us as board members or to our staff about their son or daughter being kicked off the team, we tell them these rules of eligibility are set at the beginning of the game, or at the beginning of the season, and that these rules must be applied today. That's what we tell our children. This community has also heard, many of us, from this DS and from within this district, complain when the state changed the cut rules. Do you remember that, the cut scores? And many of you sitting right out there, and many of you sitting right up here complained and cried foul when the state changed the cut scores for our math and ELA scores after our teachers and our students had prepared for those exams. We said, and rightly so, that it wasn't fair to change the rules after the expectations had been set. We were right then, and we are wrong now. We can't have our values policy in one hand and the Constitution in the other hand when we are complaining about how others treat us unfairly, and yet have our hands crossed and hidden under our armpits when the time comes for us to treat others in a fair manner, no matter how well-intentioned we are or others are who work with us. What is always best is that you treat people the way you would expect to be treated. That is, that you treat people fairly and consistently and with expectation, and that you create conditions that, as our code and our Constitution states, quote, "establish and ensure equal opportunity." By approving this resolution, we have missed an opportunity to show this entire community that we are about equal opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Any other speakers? Just let me say very briefly, I said what I had to say the other day at our press conference on Tuesday about Dr. Vargas, but I want to thank Dr. Vargas for agreeing to raise his hand and come to a district with challenge. I think you understand very easily that although you are, I'm sure, honored and humbled to hold the job, there can't be any illusions about the work that we have ahead of us. And one of the things I appreciate, Dr. Vargas, that he understands the challenges that this district has, because he was here as a board member, but even as a community member, as a person that has been in education. He's very intimately familiar with educational systems. And I think that sometimes when someone has a personality like Dr. Vargas that's very, you know, nice, gets along with people, people can sometimes underestimate him. And they underestimate him because he's a humble person. He exhibits humility on a regular basis. And I've seen him do that even as intern. When he first got here, many people didn't even know he did this. Dr. Vargas pushed through an initiative, and the staff knows this, because many of you, in fact, I got some emails from staff who didn't like his, I call it the Vargas copier initiative, and he knows what I'm talking about. When he saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in efficiencies to our current budget during his intern, his first month on the job, I don't even know if some of the board members know that, in terms of printing costs and understanding the importance of resources. Shifting resources more to the classroom and away from central office. During that, being able to do that in the context of one of the worst, in fact, the worst budget crisis that we faced in a generation last year. But he remained humble. And, you know, he didn't go out, he didn't send out a news release, he didn't call a press conference, he just did it. And as long as I've known Dr. Vargas over the years, that's his style. He leaves with humility. And I think that that is very important for, in a district like Rochester, because attitudes are a reflection of leadership. And I hope that the attitudes here at Central Office, the attitudes that we have in our schools, in our schools and in our classrooms, that a lot of those attitudes will start to change and continue to change because of the leadership that Dr. Vargas shows. I have no doubt in my mind, and I've said this, that he is extremely qualified for this job. Anyone we put in the interim position had to be qualified for this job. And Dr. Vargas has shown that, he will continue to show that. It's going to be tough for him. But lastly, the superintendent and board members, we're not superheroes, we don't wear capes, and we're not miracle workers. There was only one miracle worker, and he died a long, long time ago. So the only way that we're going to solve this crisis that we have in urban education, that's not unique to Rochester, by the way, is that it's going to take a collective, community effort. The board, the staff, here internally, but more importantly, the larger community, to roll up your sleeves and stand side by side with the educational leader in this city, which is the superintendent. And in order for the troops to be mobilized and gather around a common agenda, you're going to need a leader that has the ability to pull people together. It's one thing to go to the mountaintop and yell and scream about what needs to be done. It's another thing to be able to go to the mountaintop and bring people with you. And I believe that Dr. Vargas will bring people with him to that mountaintop to get better outcomes for our children and our community. So, Dr. Vargas, I look forward to working with you over the next couple of years. I don't know how long I'll be here, but, well, I hope that you will be here. Well, not I hope, I know, because I'll come after you personally. I know that you will be here. New York State says that we can do three-year contracts, but I know that you'll be here three years after that, after that, because I want you to be shaking my son's hand when he gets his high school diploma. Now, he's only one years old, so... That means...
It's four contracts.
That's right.
Something like that.
You're right, Commissioner Elliott, that's four contracts. That's not that long. So, I hope you will be here. Because for superintendents in urban districts, the average superintendent in urban districts is three years. And I believe that if you're going to start planting seeds, you got to be here to see the harvest. A farmer just doesn't plant seeds and go away, and I believe that Dr. Vargas will be here to see the harvest. So...
Yeah, just want to call a question?
Question has been called. We will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Camples?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
C.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Student representative, your advisory vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Congratulations, Dr. Vargas.
And, Dr. Vargas, you just wanted to make some brief comments?
Well, I just want to say thank you. Some of you would say, why do I want this job? And I think Jose Cruz and Cynthia and everybody here who has spoken, Willa and everyone who knows me probably had the answer. This job is about children. This organization is about children. Although sometime, when you look from the outside or the inside, you sometime wonder if it is about children. You sometime wonder would you see our behavior? You sometime wonder when you see behavior that are not congruent with an organization that is designed to serve and support the educational future of our children. That is number one. So I promise each one of you that that would be my motivation to lead. And I know I would make mistake. Every leader make mistake. I could tell you a few that I have made already. But I also could tell you on many success that we have as well. And I want to say this one more time, and you please don't get tired listening to me about what I'm about to say. I have said that the Rochester City School District has the ultimate responsibility for educating our kid, and that responsibility is stopped with me, but I cannot do it alone. I need each member of this community, from the youngster to the elder, from Mr. White to Mr. Merritt to Mr. Evans, Willa, Jose, Cynthia, Melissa, Ms. Adams, everyone in this district, from the custodian to the cafeteria lady, to the teacher, to the administration who had the very awesome responsibility to make sure that this organization function effectively to serve that mission that is about children. Much has been said about the Rochester City School District. I'm not here tonight to make any promise to you. Actually, I'm about to say that I have said to you many times that given that the standards are changing in New York State, that there is more challenge, this graduation class going to have greatest challenge than any prior generation in New York State. And therefore, common sense tell you that in one year, or even two years, you don't make significant change. Now, I do know, because I'm familiar with strategic planning, that I could come and say to you, the plan is that in the year 2020-something, you will have a graduation rate of such and such. I'm not going to make that commitment to you. However, I'm willing to work with you to define what real progress look like. And let me give you three things how real progress would be described. When the children and the family choose Rochester City School District for the experience that we give them, because their needs, social, emotional need of the whole child have been met. When the culture of this organization changed, that no longer is in doubt that this is an organization that is about children. It's reflecting our budget, it's reflecting our curriculum, it's reflected in the way that we relate to one another, not just slogan or action. Third, for no less, when the community has the ownership of the educational result for our children, as well as the district, and hold us accountable for the experience that we give up our students and the result. Last, for no less, all of this had to be in the context of higher expectation in multiple places. It can't just be teacher having expectation for the child to be in school every day. It has to be from the sibling to the uncle, to the parent. Yes, the administration had to keep track and act seriously around the challenges that we're facing here. I am very blessed to have worked with school board that have been offering me the opportunity to serve as your interim superintendent, where when I came here, as you know, there was significant challenge. And we are not out of the water yet. We are making progress. I begin to see signs of progress, but make no mistake, change is not easy. And don't be fooled by change, because when you think you're making progress, if you don't keep watching or working on it, guess what happened? You go back to the old day, to the same way that we used to do business. We would get back into the same pattern. So, to the board, we say that we have an incredible responsibility, and it is my job to work with each one of you as a board and as an individual to meet the needs of our students. I want to say and conclude with this. My life experience is about education. I came to this country where I don't know a single word of English. And I remember finding myself in the classroom of the University of Pennsylvania, who the only person who had graduated from a so-called average institution, and I'm very proud of the excellent education that I received in public school in New York City, in one of the most challenging school in the city of New York. And my appreciation and understanding for what education can do for the individual and the community came from that experience. And I also know the difference when an individual like me and so many of our children go to our school, and the only hope that they have is a central office that can respond to their needs. Their only hope is a teacher that can respond to their needs. And the only hope is perhaps their peer, their principal, their custodian, the cafeteria lady, and everyone who works in this organization. I know that. And I also know, because I've been privileged, as I mentioned to you, when I attended the University of Pennsylvania, sometime I would, I say, am I in the right place? And you went to Stanford, you went to Princeton, you went to Harvard? And I say, oh, yeah. And by the way, I went to such and such independent school, and how much did you pay? Well, it was, you know, $40,000 toish, $20,000. And I said, well, I see the difference in your perspective, which I appreciate it, by the way. I appreciate all perspective. But at the same time, it's important for us to know that our children don't have that kind of background, they have us. And it is my hope that one day we not be the few who will be proud of the Rochester City School District, but it will be the majority, not because of the work that I did or that I've been doing, but because of all of us say in this community, enough is enough. It is time for the children to be number one, and that we are congruent daily, minute by minute, hour by hour, not just during the 180 days of school or the six and a half hour, but through the entire year. And I look forward to working with each one of you, and I'm committed to working with you, but I know a Messiah. I need you. You are the Messiah for our children. It is all of us. It doesn't take one, it takes all of us. President Evans, I know you since you were a youngster, and I'm so proud to be sitting next to you, and Willa, who have worked with me, and Jose, Cynthia, Melissa, Ms. Adams, Mr. White, and our beloved student in here, we are a team. We are a team. And the day that you feel that I'm hurting this district, let's sit down, and we will departure and move forward, because the last thing that I want to do is hurt the district. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute reset.
I just have something...
Yeah. Yeah. Really.[452.12]
...librarians and teacher and every everyone is continuing to push for our student to read outside the school during the break. And we estimate that around 20,000 people have taken place in we instituted this in our reading. The so-called Rock Read, which is I when I go to school, the the student I beginning to talk to me like there goes the Rock Read guy. He's going to ask a question about Rock Read. What are you reading? So it is exciting because as I mentioned earlier, we cannot do this work alone. We need the community. And part of that is for them to read to their children, read with their children during the school break and during the summer. And I know that our student here is an incredible reader. And I sometimes talk to her about what she reading and I'm very proud, not just of her, but all our students that I taking part on this. The as you know, there's a debate right now in Washington about our tutoring services. And you saw a piece in the local newspaper. We are expecting that in New York State, we hear about the waiver that have been submitted within a week or two. Extended learning, mandatory kindergarten, we continue to work very hard on that regard. We are receiving some positive message from the something is going on when you hear that the commission is talking about on during the weekend about Rochester concerning our extended learning. And there are some discussion taking place as we speak about how could the state lend us some help financially and otherwise. Our city high program is continuing to the work continue. The office of HCI, Bethany and all they are working pretty hard to make sure that we get the staffing process in place and that we also get community involved as well. And I have been visiting some of our school as well. I was a school number 19. And let me tell you that I think Commissioner Cruz mentioned the other night about music. I couldn't be so happy. And I also observe a math class in there, President Evans, and the kid were doing 10th grade math. And it was just unbelievable. And the other thing is that research tell us is very clear that if you get our student to do algebra by eighth grade, you have put them in the right place as they move into ninth grade, that that's just the more you challenge your student early on, the most likely that you are going to be able to help them be successful in school. And I see some positive signs. And I want, you know, not just to be to be an example, but just to be the norm. I think that there's great work in the district going on. The question on our challenge, Mr. President Evans is how do you make it systemic? And that high expectation, I mean, you go to that school, and and I know Ms. Adams would tell you that she won't look at the test score, but she will look at what's taking place in there. And I think people would be pretty happy about what they see. And there's no question in my mind that that school has high expectation everywhere, from the music classroom to the math classroom. And I was so encouraged that it could not have come a better days when I when I heard from you about this position, because to me, those are things that I like lighthouse that the district need to build on. I want to thank you, the police department, they collect over 7,000 books, and they distribute that through our school so that our children can take home. I do not want to hear this word anymore, that our children don't have books to read. This society is wealthy enough to put books in children's hands. And we have many partner that you're going to see from the police department to the Chevy dealer, they're going to be asking the Monroe County to drop books of their dealership so that we can give it to our children. And I will encourage you in your discussion, when you see a child, please ask one question. What are you reading? How are you doing? And how is it going in school? And if the child says not going well, find out. Don't just leave it in the conversation. Let's do something about. When I speak about, and I will conclude my report, it's not just the culture of the district that need to change. Also, the culture need to change some outside the district as well, even by the dialogue that we have with our children. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're going to ask that most board, most of the board reports be submitted in writing, with the exception of our student rep. Do you have a?
Can we ask questions of the presidents of the superintendent's report?
Okay, absolutely. Questions for the superintendent?
Commissioner Elliott?
Yeah, Mr. Superintendent, what has been the parent feedback for the Rock Read program? How has parents responded to that?
It has been strong, as measured by how many of them have cashed out their $6 meal. I use that because I want to use number. I want it over 6,000.
Okay.
Parents. Let me just say this. The other thing that we have is information which Wegmans they going. But last but not least, many of them are reading with our children because we ask the question to read to their parents and the parent to read to the kid. And we estimate that this is a combined effort of families and children, over 20,000 written response, which, as you know, at least you've interviewed aware, at least one response.
Yes, sir.
But there have been 20 of those, many of them which are very provocative. And I need to thank our librarians and Carleen, who is the head of our librarian, because she doing extraordinary work. I never seen a person more busy. When I go to her office, her response to answer your question, I unbelievable, the number of written response. And that is an excellent question, because we cannot leave reading just to chance. But I will say by now is strong. We are not where we need to be. We only have around 20% of the family and the student participating. But it is my hope that the community agency, churches and civics and family and the district become aware that we are going to build on this.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. You said you got 20% who?
6,000 of them.
Okay, but then you got 20,000 responses?
Over 20,000 responses, but that's having over a period of three time.
Okay, okay.
And that mean every time that we ask and we going up, but we starting with about 20%, we are around 21.
Okay.
But and that's what I'm asking. And I think your question is excellent. We need to find out to what extent we have given all kinds of choices. I met with a union, the 1199. First thing that I asked, he told me, what can I do for you? I said, talk to your member and just talk to them about Rock Read, reading during the break.
Well, the other part, the my thoughts around that is that if we can have parent input around it, we can also change their mindsets as well to help them to encourage their their children to do even more reading. But we have to help them to change their minds around the value of reading. So there has to be, in some way, some education towards or some marketing towards parents and about the significance and the importance of reading and the impact that that has on their children's academic success.
That is an excellent point. And we're tracking the success by the school, the school themselves. Some of them, school number two, for example. East High School is number one, I thought, anima. It's I'm so happy to see one school doing better than the school of the art on Rock Read, because the school of the art was first.
Well, you know, that's where I came from.
And they got into a competition. So it was it was good to see. And also, for the summer, I think that it's going to make a difference because we have so many partner that the entire United Way and business and all there are interested in supporting the district on this. And I'm talking about financially as well. This has cost the district very small number of resources minimal in terms of places like, for example, Wegmans is over 180,000 commitment. And we had the United Way have contribute to the purchases of books. The ITA also is a participant. And we just need to build it. It will take a long time. It's not something that is going to shift overnight.
And just to the point of information, and I have a couple of questions, but I'll email those to you. I got an email, I think Anne Scott Brown also received an email from the Leadership Academy for men, for young men, talk and feedback and surveys about how they feel about the program and participated in that program and the caring that they're receiving and the learning that's taking place in that program. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the the Leadership Academy for Young Men over there and the work that they're doing there. Seem to be doing some great work over there. So hopefully, that's going to translate into positive academic success over there.
I'm glad that you mentioned that, because that program need our help. They're doing great, but we need to continue to build. And that is a son youngster, for some reason, because it's a new school. They might not be, well, I don't want to go to old boy's school and that sort of thing. And we need to show, and I could tell you that that building is working so hard on attendance. They're working harder than everybody's working hard. But let me tell you that the motivation that they have to make sure that each one of those youngsters get to school each day is is commanded.
Okay.
And they are doing it as a team. And they they had a student, for example, that when you look at ninth grade attendance, you have to look at eighth grade, because many of those kids, when they enter ninth grade, already have a serious attendance problem.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Yeah. In terms of reading, I think the Rock Read initiative is critical, but I know you know that we know whether a child is going to graduate in ninth in from high school by the reading proficiency at third grade. And and what I've often found strange is that suburban districts have reading teachers, but this urban district, which struggles from reading proficiency, does not. Have we thought about any, because at best, Rock Read is a temporary solution that doesn't get to the problem of children who come to school not prepared to read. It certainly engages their interest, but I'm sure you would agree, it doesn't provide the long term solution that we need. Have we thought about, and you can provide the answer later on, engaging in any long term systemic look at our kids' reading level and what our parents are, you know, I know this might seem condescending, but to some extent, we should be encouraging parents. No, it's not condescending. It's the right thing to say. We should be encouraging parents to read to their children because they are our first teachers. So have we thought about an effort directed at parents, encouraging parents to read with the kids at home? And then, more importantly, have we thought about going back to having reading teachers in our district? And you can give me the answer later on by email if you'd like.
Well, let me give you the answer, because you were on this board when that decision was made. And in terms of continuing with teacher, discontinuing the number we have. But I also a great believer that every decision that was made in the past, I like to examine very careful and thorough. So that it is on the consideration and it's on the I have had some dialogue around that and see what the the best way to perceive in that regard. But the Rock Read is not a temporary solution. It's a permanent solution, because there's no way that we can close the achievement gap if we only give experience to our kid during six and a half hour, and particularly during summertime, and particularly during winter break and all the breaks that they have. And also, it builds what I was saying, that the culture of reading, has to be a culture that is embraced throughout the community. And yes, the district has the ultimate responsibility for that. But I could tell you, you went as a youngster to Brighton. And for example, when I go to Bunsen Noble, and I see the reading list for McQuaid, Brighton, Penfield, it's very rigorous. It's very exciting. Well, for the first time, I will tell you that I'm very proud that the Rochester City School District will have a reading list at Bunsen Noble. And it's something that we might hope, and we're going to post it through other churches and community and everywhere, to set the high expectation that you talk about. High expectation had to take place in multiple places. It cannot be just the classroom teacher. Let me just conclude, Commissioner White, that I haven't received you, Commissioner Campos mentioned, and I won't let it go to my head, but you have mentioned my lack of teacher training, and you and I can have that discussion later. But I had no doubt in my mind that if a teacher were had a vote, I had no doubt in my mind that there would not be anyone in the United States that would secure this job, because they will vote overwhelmingly for me. And for one reason only, because I recognize what what it's take to educate a child, that is be own. And teachers are important. They are powerful. They are meaningful. They are influential. At the end of the day, it is more powerful when you have a gateway effect, when you have high expectation of a teacher, with high expectation of the community, or an adult, or another person, you have a winning formula.
You know, I thought that discussion was over.
No, no, but I just wanted to.
Well, there was no need to backtrack, because you will.
Right.
Because you will be superintendent, and I'm going to support you probably just as much, if not more, than most people in the community. And I know you have a lot of support out there in the community. So we don't need to backtrack that discussion.
Yep.
The decision has been made. I would, though, to keep the conversation going forward, I think we agree that there has to be high expectations in the classroom and at home and the churches. I was only suggesting that in addition to Rock Read, which I think is a good program, that we need to look broader. And by that, I mean at the homes with the parents, because it wasn't Brighton that taught me how to read. And actually, the first part of my academic career was in the city. It was my parents who taught me a love of learning. So I think you and I are on the same page in that. And I don't think there should be any argument or disagreement about that. I just, my question was relating to programming that the district offers in terms of, do we have teachers that help our kids read? And just to correct you on one point, and I'm sure some of your colleagues have been around here, will tell you that the decision to get rid of teachers, reading teachers, was made long before I got here. By the time I got here, there was just one or two left. So I remember asking your predecessor about how we got there and whether there was any chance that we could sort of turn that around. And he didn't seem to be too enthusiastic. So I was just sort of looking from you to see tests from you, to get a gauge from you as whether you thought that was part of the viable solution. And again, we've got plenty of time to talk about this. We don't have to talk about it tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Melissa, Melissa wanted to mention, and I will do finance. And then, well, the rest of the reports can be, if those can be submitted in writing, that'd be great, because we do need to go, we have an executive session tonight. Commissioner Campos, you want to mention about wellness? And just so you know, I need to talk about wellness, but I ate I ate pizza earlier, but I didn't have a yogurt. And I just ate a bunch of candy, so, and water. So I'm trying to get that.
All about the island. I am not perfect either. I just had two Reese's, thanks to Commissioner Cruz. So I just wanted to, one of the things that we're doing is, in terms of promoting wellness, we're making sure we're, we have a wellness logo contest that our students submitted logos. And this is going to be, you'll hear more about how schools can become wellness certified. But that's something that we're going to do in order to bring the push this initiative forward. And we're actually meeting next month to discuss that. But one of the things, it's kind of like what Chuck says, he calls it the good housekeeping stamp of approval. That's what this essentially is in terms of wellness. So these were our, we received, I think it was like 12 submissions. And based on that, the committee came up with that these were the top three. We can go online to vote for which one we'd like to be the district's wellness logo. I just want to give just some background on each of these. So this one over here, the way end, is from Jeremiah Jordan Ferguson from Freddie Thomas High School. He's a senior. And his concept is eating healthy and staying active are the two basic ways of staying healthy. So I took the skull and crossbones idea and used a basketball, a carrot, and a bottle of water. And I filled the basketball with different sports that are played, as well as different healthy fruits, vegetables, and milk. For the middle one, okay, the middle one, this is from Miley Morales, right over here. School of Business, Finance, and Entrepreneurship at Edison. She is a junior. The outside represents the school and people coming together as a supporting community. The inside heart that is connected with a fork and spoon promotes healthy eating habits and its effect on the body. The leaping person represents physical health, but going through the heart promotes emotional wellness encouraged by the community. And this one right here was from Brian Vasquez, School of Imaging and Information Technology at Edison, grade 11. Student, school staff, and families are parts of community and environmental, physical and mental are parts of health as well. The community is resting on the graduation cap that also represents the student. Health is represented by healthy food and the location of the heart. The sun, that red right there, that's a sun, and words create a feeling of energy. So those are the concepts that the students came up with. I think they just did a absolutely fantastic job. So you can vote for those on the website. We'll announce the, say that again, should I?
They'll be voted May 2nd.
May 2nd through May 18th is when the voting can take place. And we will announce the winner next month and have our top three finalists come as well to receive some recognition. That concludes my report on that.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a, we have a monthly financial report, Commissioner Powell?
Yes, and we also have the quarterly change order report.
We have the monthly financial report and the quarterly change order report, which board members should have received via, was that sent via Board docs? Was that hard cotton?
That's not Board docs.
That was sent through Board docs.
I moved the financial report.
It's been moved, financial report has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And also, the quarterly change order report.
I'd like to make one comment about the quarterly change order report that was brought to our attention, that from the last quarter of 2011 to the end of first quarter of this year, there were no changes reflected in the change order report. There was nothing
Wow.
to change. However, in the sort of time between the cutoff for that and today, we have seven final payments, which do include change orders. So.
So basically, we broke, we messed up the record.
Yes, sir. We're not going to be able to keep that record going for another quarter. But it's good to be seeing those numbers on a regular basis.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
No, I just wanted to express my apologies to Chairperson Powell and Commissioner Cruz. I have not been at the last couple few meetings, and I apologize, my schedule has not allowed me to. And I know they depend on the sort of quorum thing is very precarious. But I did want to publicly apologize for missing a number of meetings. I generally don't, Commissioner Powell has chaired that committee for quite a while, and I've usually been there. You put me on that committee, and I've hated every moment of.
Punished me. No, I'm kidding.
Because I'm just not that kind of finance person. But I have enjoyed it. And I didn't want Commissioner Powell to think that I was shrugging my responsibilities, just been very busy.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner White, for that public confession.
It doesn't fix the fact that I, it doesn't fix the fact that I missed my son's birthday party on Tuesday because of budget deliberations.
Yes, I know.
And I'm missing his actual birthday today. Shout out to Alex. Have a happy eighth birthday.
Happy birthday, Alex. Message for any of you interested in running for the school board.
Yeah, right.
Be prepared, I'm missing some birthdays. Wait, my anniversary? Shoot.
No.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. All those in favor of the quarterly change order report, please say aye.
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 Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. Reports can be submitted as written. Is our parent rep here? Our parent rep is not here. All right. Is it written? Okay, we have, we'll take it as written. Thank you. And we're going to move to the consideration of resolutions. You have a report for us?
Yes.
Okay, student rep, I'll let you give a report. I should have had you guys go first. I'm sorry. You guys should be home.
Priorities.
We got caught, we got caught up in the, in the earlier things. I'm sorry, guys. You still have to go to school tomorrow.
Maybe you could write us late notes.
Yeah, I'll write a late note for you. Yep, go ahead.
Before student members speak, I, yesterday at our meeting, we had a bunch of guests come. So I would like to thank Mr. Gardner. He's a teacher here in the district. And he came to speak to us about Washington. We're going to Washington, as Sabrina said, to learn about government. And last year, we actually got to see a real Senate meeting, and they were voting on a bill. And hopefully, we're going to get to meet, we met politicians last year, and this year, congressmen and senators. So, oh, and there's also an opportunity for us to meet Michelle Obama. So fingers crossed for that. So.
Mrs. Obama.
Mrs. Obama, yes.
In the black community, they tell you, put a handle on the name. Mrs. Obama.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson came, and he's offered us the opportunity along with Mr. Cotto, to volunteer May 19th at the Wellness Fair. So I hope you can all come. And Ms. Campos, as the Wellness Committee member, and we're going to be volunteering there, speaking about being healthy and helping out with activities. I'd also like to thank Ms. Sunsmore, who came to our meeting to talk to us about going to City Wise, which is the WXCI program with Sheera Coleman, to speak with the student forum. Again, we did this in the fall. And lastly, Ms. Campos, who came to the meeting yesterday. And she was a big part of our discussion on bullying, and she really contributed to the conversation as well. So now I'm going to turn it over to Unique Fair from World of Inquiry.
Hi, everyone. My name is Unique Fair, and I'm a ninth grader at World of Inquiry High School. I've been a member of SLC for nearly three years. SLC provides an opportunity to pool the thoughts of the district students. And those thoughts are put into the voice, and put are put into a voice on the educational board. Our thoughts and opinions are told to Ms. Galvin, who's, who's, who's our group's representative. Other projects include going into the community to assist when needed. If it comes to working in a kitchen, or dividing donated toys to be given away, or going to a school to read to, to read to the younger youth, SLC is always works towards the better. I believe that SLC projects should be continued and amplified throughout the entire country to help improve the current educational system. Before I finish, I'd like to thank Ms. Ms. Campos for showing value in us by coming to our SLC meeting yesterday. Thank you.
I know I spoke before, but I felt compelled to come back and defend my superintendent and say that his work in our district has shown growth. There's been growth. And I recently just came back to the district in 2010. And since I've been here, I've seen teachers work consistently, improving math and reading in our district. And also in my school, I go to East, as I said before. And, you know, East doesn't have that much of a good reputation among the people in Rochester. So to see that students are now engaged, and there are multiple resources in our district to prevent dropping out, to prevent, you know, conflict amongst amongst students and stuff like that. So I want to commend Dr. Vargas again, and the members of the board and teachers for the work that they put in, the effort, the consistency, and the faith that they have within us as students, and the fact that they don't give up on us. Keep doing a good job, guys.
Which school did you come from, Baptist District?
Well, I transferred here from Jamaica.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Finn, you want to say something real quick?
Our next student representative on the board.
Hi, I'm Finn Galvin. I go to Wilson Foundation in the seventh grade. I'd like to talk about SLC and what we do and what it does for students, including myself. SLC is a great way to get back, give back to your community. As Unique said, we've done many things in the community, including reading to younger students, dividing toys for kids who couldn't, parents who couldn't afford to give their children toys on Christmas. And it also is a way for you to see what your peers in the district feel about problems that the Rochester City School District does. And it is a great way to see, see and give our ideas to. And it is a great way to see and give our ideas to you and other important people that run this district. Thank you.
I spoke before, along with Sabrina earlier, there were just a few things that I wanted to say. One, really quick, was that I'm very happy that one of my best friends, Sophie, convinced me to join SLC this year because it has given me a whole new experience. And I've learned things that I didn't realize mattered as much to me as they do. I'm a senior now and I wish I had joined SLC before in my earlier years, but I'm very glad that I joined up now because I have, I'm more opinionated about a lot of the political things that I didn't think I was interested in at all. So I'm very happy that Sophie did that for me. Another thing, along with Sabrina, was that I wanted to come up here and defend Dr. Vargas on all the wonderful things that I think he has done for all of us here. Because he comes to SLC meetings, he takes names, he takes notes, and he gets right on the things that we, that we need, the things that we want to change in our schools. One of the big things that a lot of us were rooting for was better food in our schools. And since we've had the meetings and things, a lot of them, a lot of changes have gone through with the schools. They tried out having paninis at our school, and everyone loves them. And we have them every Thursday. And we have them every Thursday, they come in and they do paninis, and it's very good. And I think that you do a brilliant job with listening to the students. And one thing that I wanted to touch on that Mr. White said was that your lack of experience was one of the things, the lack of experience and the fact that the rules were changed. One thing is, the lack of experience, to me, says two things. One thing is that he's been with the students more and he knows exactly what we want because we just told him what he wanted. He has been, he would listen to the students and he does exactly what we need. And two, a lot of people, a lot of people feel that with, even people in the government, the United States government, with the senators and political leaders, they say that a lot of them have a lot of fluff going around and they don't really get things done of what they need. I think that the lack of experience in politics of everything is a good thing because that means that he knows, is more honest, and he knows how to get things done correctly and he doesn't go around saying things and they don't get done until 10 years later. Also, the thing about the rules changing, I think that it's a good thing. It's not that we said that, it's not that we said that no one else can apply because we already have someone for the job, even though we said he wasn't going to get the job. I think that it just means that we realized that there was a mistake. We realized that there was a good man for the job already there, and we just wanted to give him a chance to prove himself to everyone else. It means that if we hadn't changed now, then we've changed so much in the past that not one person sitting on the board right now would be able to do anything if it was back even 100 years ago. Not one person would be in power right now. But the fact that all of you guys are sitting here means that change is a good thing, means that people realize their mistakes and they get to change them. And I think that it was a wonderful job picking Dr. Vargas for our superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, student leadership commissioner.
Point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much, student leadership.
Point of personal privilege.
I wanted to conclude by saying, the reason I started to bring members to the meetings is because I feel it's important that the public sees more students taking the initiative and being involved and showing their commitment to the district and our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, students. We appreciate it. Good luck in Washington DC. We look forward to seeing the photos. Now go home and go to bed.
Homework.
Homework.
I just want to say something real quick because I was at the meeting. We, there was a really deep discussion on bullying, and I have to say, and I told the students this, these are a bunch of old souls that have such strong values and just high standards, and they, the conversation was unbelievable. They're just amazing, amazing individuals. And I was told them, I feel confident in our future as long as they're at the helm. So they're just amazing people.
Mr. President, I have a point of personal privilege. I just wanted to mention that I, along with Felix Jacobs, visited School 43. President Evans had received letters from the sixth, fifth and sixth grade class there about our food program. And so he and I went and visited that, that class and got a lot of feedback, President Evans and Mr. Superintendent about, about the food program. And so our intent is to follow back up, you know, stay in touch with that class to make sure that we're getting quality, quality food. Leslie Fowler also visited. And so we, we really, I, I commit to, to spending, to monitoring that program even closer than what I have in the past to make sure that we, and I know, Mr. Superintendent, you are committed to making sure our students get the best possible food. So I'll be in your face, in your face, because the students are in our faces about this food. So thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent.
And the letters were very well written and I responded to.
They also wrote First Lady Obama
Right, about the letter.
With regard to, and criticizing our food program.
So I made sure I responded to this letter because I don't want to deal with those kids, they look like they know what they're doing, so.
And let me just, let me just say this on a serious note, there's one student in there that does not eat all day because the food is so bad. Now, he also mentioned that he's on some form of medication and he looks like he's, you know, kind of low key. But he doesn't eat all day and that really is a concern for me because the food is not the quality of food that he, he would eat.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolutions. All reports can be, can be submitted in writing because we have an executive session after this. Now, some of these, some of these, some of these resolutions, we're going to talk about an executive session because, you know, whenever we have, one of our board members came, had a proposal that this board agreed to, that whenever we have a tenure appointment, that it will be reviewed in executive session. So we'll vote on those afterwards. And then there's a resolution for the Personnel Committee too, that we also can discuss in the executive session. And we'll deal with, so we'll deal with the bulk of the resolutions with the exceptions of the ones that relate to tenure in the Personnel, in the Personnel Committee resolutions.
So which, which numbers are those?
So we are going to deal with, um,
The only one that's tenure is, uh, six fifty-three.
Six fifty-two.
Okay.
So we'll deal with six fifty-three through six seventy-one. And I'll entertain a motion for six fifty-three through six seventy-one.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded.
Who's second?
Oh, seconded, second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Been properly moved and seconded. Discussion on six fifty-three through six seventy-one. Okay, hearing none. There's one I need to abstain from, Madam Clerk. Can you capture that one? I can't remember what number it is. Well, I, I, when we get to that one, I'll abstain. So all those in favor of six fifty-three through six seventy-one, please say aye.
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 I vote, I abstain on the, on the one that the clerk has.
It's under, actually, it's under the category of other resolutions.
All right, so I vote yes to all.
And I have a no vote to six sixty-eight to six seventy-one.
Six sixty-eight to six seventy-one. Madam Clerk, if you capture that. Thank you. The next, six seventy-two through six seventy-five is budget. And these are budget amendments, as you know, we have these from time to time. Commissioner Powell, if there's anything you want to add?
Only that it represents an increase in grant funding that then also has associated increases in expense on the expense side.
We've got more grant money. And with that grant money, we had to spend it. So there's an increase on the positive side and an increase on the, on the negative side. So we're taking in grant money, but we're spending the grant money that we took in, hence the budget amendment. Any questions or discussion around six seventy-two through six seventy-five? All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We like grant money. Next is six seventy-six through six seventy-nine. These are procurement and supply resolutions that have gone through the Finance Committee. Commissioner Powell, if there's anything that you want to add, these are pretty standard.
Yeah, no, procurement ones, no.
Okay. Those are up on the machine, Phoenix machine. There's some sports stuff, and also, OSCEs. I'll entertain a motion to approve six seventy-six
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of six seventy-six through six seventy-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Again, resolutions that have gone through Finance, six eighty through six ninety-nine.
Mr. President.
It's been properly moved and seconded. These are educational facility
Was it second? Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Adams.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I would like to.
Commissioner Powell?
Observation about the eleven resolutions that involve construction. I believe the Assembly already submitted and passed a bill that would address the maintenance of effort concerns of the city.
And the Senate also was introduced.
This, yes, it was introduced and it's already left committee, so it's fast-tracked, but my input is that it may not, well, feedback I got from administration was it may still not be enough, fast enough, for us to do everything on that list of eleven buildings, eleven resolutions. Some of those resolutions are, are going to go forward based on our contingency plan for the capital improvement project. The others, it, it really is going to depend on whether City Hall has faith that the Senate and the Assembly bill are in fact the same, that the governor will sign it. It really puts the burden on City Hall to approve our capital improvement borrowing, whether we're going to see all eleven of these construction projects go forward this summer.
The hope, the hope was that City Hall, that if they saw movement on the legislation in the introduction of two pieces of legislation, which they are, they're both same as, which is good.
They're both clean.
And they're both clean, that said, that they said they would agree for the construction project to go forward because there's not any objections in this time around as to, as opposed to last year around, around this time. It's, the Assembly, the Assembly's version and the Senate versions are exactly the same. So I think the mayor and hopefully City Council feels comfortable with that. I think that's an accurate assessment, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, I had a conversation yesterday with the mayor and he, he has strong interest in helping us navigate this process. So Jerome and I and Mary were very encouraged at our conversation that he, he would try to help us. But most significantly is the, what Commissioner Powell said, and you said it, that the bill is moving fast and we hope that within days, if in no week, that we, we will have a bill for the governor to sign.
Thank you. All right, anything else on six eighty through six, six ninety-nine? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then seven hundred through seven twenty-three is what we call the potpourri category, little mix of everything.
Motion to sever seven twenty-two.
Motion to sever seven twenty-two, you will discuss that in executive session. Is there any objection to severing seven twenty-two? All right, hearing no objection, seven twenty-two is severed. So we have seven, seven hundred through seven twenty-one. We took care of twenty-three already. So seven hundred through seven twenty-one. And seven hundred through seven twenty-one, I will entertain a motion for seven hundred through seven twenty-one.
So moved.
Well, I was, I'm just, go ahead.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, so we will discuss seven hundred through seven twenty-one. Any, any questions around seven hundred through seven twenty-one?
I thought
No, 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 no.
Come on, sir.
No, no, no. Mine relates to seven twenty-two.
Okay, you're going to
Yeah, we're going
Yeah, we
Yes, first of all, I wanted to abstain on seven oh-two.
Okay.
And then I have questions on seven oh-three and seven oh-five.
Seven oh-three is, um
I just broke my glasses, I hope I can read what I wrote.
Seven oh-two is for Monroe to Orleans
Yeah.
Department of Educational Services.
Right. My question is, how is this, how do we measure the success of this program? How many are, how many talented students is this defined as? What's, what's the definition of talented students? Who will, with a focus on math and science? Can someone define that? And how many, how many students do we have in this district who are considered talented students out of whatever population that this is supposed to?
This is Project Adept, who's, who's, Mr. Superintendent, is that?
Is that something that you all have to get back to me on?
Or do we have answers?
Because I don't see anybody getting up.
Oh, she's waiting for
Oh, okay.
They're good, they're waiting for their leader to
That's what you're supposed to do, yeah, I understand that.
Ms. Mercedes Miller?
I am going to have to get back to, I want to clarify, but I know that they've been developing certain things for their signature as part of their school. And so part of it is around developing smaller programs around STEM or the arts as they're moving forward. But we can get more clarity for you on that. But that's some of the work they've been doing over at that building.
How many students over at forty-six school?
About 300.
Okay. Yeah, if you can get that information for me.
Okay.
And you may need to stand for seven oh-five.
Okay.
That relates to the U of R.
Right, right, right. How do we test or evaluate that the professional development that is provided by U of R is effective? Do we see that in increased test scores, an increased performance?
With the MSP grant, there's a required research evaluation piece to it, so we can get you more detail on that. Because there's a research arm, because this is such a big grant, so whenever we engage with partners, we're required to give some sort of assessment back, but it is around teacher professional development and the measurements around that.
Okay, so, so are we, so we're able to measure the, the development, the professional development that they undergo, and that translates into their being able, being higher performers in the classroom?
It should be, yes.
Thereby, our students being higher performers.
It should be, yes, but the objectives are more aligned with how this observed practice in the classroom, not always connected all the way to student achievement the way that the grant is designed. I know, but we can provide you with the research evaluation arm piece that they give you with this MSP grant.
Thank you.
Commissioner Elliott, thank you, Beth. Your question is one that I've, I've been having some discussion with the Office of Professional, oh, Professional Development, and that's a level five question, which is, I have been looking around in the nation to see if there's any district that has a model that get to your question. I can tell you that it's scary that there are very few, that your question is so important because of the investment that we put in PD in here. And the other thing that I think my colleagues, we agree with that, that every time we have low performance coming from the state, we normally use, we're going to do more PD. Well, if that's one of the thing that we are going to do, then we've got to measure something that connect to student achievement. I don't know what that measure would be, but it's an important question and, and unfortunately, like I said, it's not, it's not easy because sometimes you do this, let's say this year, and the result doesn't show, let's say, two or three years later. But it's, it's not, there's no easy answer to your question, but there ought to be some kind of attempt to work on that.
Okay. And then Resolution seven thirteen, please explain to me what I'm going to be voting on here.
Seven what?
Seven thirteen is
I think that's Mr. Underwood.
Oh, seven thirteen is
Is that Mr. Underwood?
It's the bond.
Oh, Vern, okay.
This looks like bonding, but, um
Please explain to me what's going on here.
Vern, oh
Is this Vern or, oh, you said seven thirteen, right?
Seven thirteen, yes.
I'm sorry, seven thirteen.
The one that's marked.
It is Phase One bonds, it looks like. Uh, seven thirteen.
I'll speak to it, good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
The, we're on the cusp of actually breaking ground on the FMP. Before we break ground Before we break ground, uh, the bonds that the RJSCB are going to essentially issue, uh, it is imperative and it makes good sense for this board to be aware of and approve the, the, the school district, um, supporting that. So the bonds, this is the first round of bonds of the whole proverbial three hundred and twenty-five million dollars. So the set of bonds, uh, that are going to, again, the RJSCB through Comida are gonna issue is what this fund, these funds, uh, refer to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
You had, you had, you, you had, you all had to write all of this?
Chuck.
Come on, you had to write all of that for this?
Commissioner White.
Yep, yep, why Comida or Comida?
He's gonna respond.
All right, the question is why, why Comida, right? Right.
Why, why Comida?
Yeah, that's what...
Is it Comida or Comida? Or tomato or tomato?
Tomato, tomato.
It could have been the Dormitory Authority, you know, that was a decision that was made by the RJSCB, whether they went, and I think it was done on the basis of price. Um, I, I can't tell you more about that, very honestly.
It was absolutely done on the basis of price. It's actually, um, pretty much put up a bid between both, and, uh, the DASNY, um, costs are significantly more than Comida.
Okay, but now you wanna ask my question about Mr. Johnson, about why this thing is a dissertation?
Well, there, there are some people that...
Bond resolution?
There are the people that just live in this world of public finance and, uh, bond resolutions and the, um, the, the law firm in New York City that, that does this work, uh, I said, I, and when I, when we spoke to them on, in the multiple conference calls, I said, are you gonna send to us the magic language that you wanna see, because there are, there are people in the bond market that, that expect to see certain language?
Okay.
But the, the most important thing is, there was a resolution draft that we sent to you last Friday and had a blank in it, and the question, the, the number was, what's, what's the, the maximum that they can actually sell in bonds?
Mm-hmm.
And it, as Jerome mentioned, the, the overall, all twelve schools would be three hundred and twenty-five million, you would be authorizing in this resolution for them to sell for, for Phase One A, which is for the first, uh, five schools, as well as the technology program, authorize the sale of bonds up to a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. So the bottom line is, you would be authorizing them to sell those bonds to finance the construction for, for, in essence, sort of one-half of the work, a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Commissioner White.
What does Comida get paid for doing this? Uh, quite frankly, when I hear that agency's name, it throws up all kinds of red flags. So I, I, could you tell me what, I, I don't, I don't see it in the resolution, perhaps I'm missing it, I see a lot of big numbers, but obviously Comida's not getting that number. What are they getting paid? You said it was competitively bid, what are they getting paid?
The, the finance documents talk about a number of fees, I, you know, I cannot tell you what Comida will, I mean, they, they get their, you know, their attorney's fees will get paid through the transaction. Um, we can, I can, I can certainly find that out. I, I will ask and get that information for you.
So, so what you know at this particular time is, is probably his attorney's fees, it does Comida, the agency itself, get some kind of overhead processing fee?
I mean, there, certainly their transaction costs, primarily their attorneys get paid, um, and I, I, and I'm sure that, I mean, they use, you know, full, uh, full, uh, the, uh, Fulbright Law Firm out of New York City, which is a, a very large firm, I'm sure they are very well paid. I, I will find out, um, I'm happy to find out what those transaction costs will be.
Is there, is there a timeline associated? I know Mr. Underwood is probably cringing in his chair, but is there a timeline associated with the approval of this, uh, resolution?
Does it have to be?
In other words, does it have to be tonight?
We, we recognize that, that this is a, an enormous step, we're coming to you actually early. Um, the, the, the actual closing of this transaction won't be until June, uh, but, you know, we want to, you know, there's a lot of planning that goes into, into this process, but we recognize that there might be, be questions, uh, and the city is going to be dealing with their, uh, authorization in May, uh, not in April, but we want to bring it to you early because it's an important step.
And, and I certainly appreciate that, as I can imagine my colleagues do. I, I, just to cut this discussion short, given the complexity of the resolution and given your, your remarks that perhaps we don't need to do this tonight, I don't know if Mr. Underwood, you have a different, uh, description of the timing of this, but I would respectfully suggest that we table this and, uh, because I, again, I, Comida raises red flags, I mean, not that there's anything wrong with this, but...
But if you got the, you got the money, the balance?
Yeah, if, if I can, I think what's, um, hopefully I'm stating the obvious, is that, um, this board, this district is, is not spending the hundred and thirty-eight million. What the resolution is looking for is pretty much, you know, the concurrence, if you will, by this board, and as, uh, Mr. Johnson mentioned, the city, um, and the district as the two pretty much partners, um, who have brought the, our, the RJSCB is our agent, our meaning the city and, and, uh, the school district, and the funds that we're talking about, the hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, again, that's coming via the sale of bonds. So, um, specifically, uh, the board, this board, uh, what we're asking via the resolution is not for this board to spend a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, but it's a way to keep you informed of the fact that, uh, we're moving forward, we being the RJSCB and the, the FMP project in general, uh, with respect to, um, any fees and whatnot, um, in terms of the costs, I think is very, very appropriate, and not only that, uh, is it appropriate, but this board will get pretty much a copy of the closing statement, if you will, um, Commissioner White, with respect to how fees are disbursed, and I think what you're referring to with respect to, uh, Comida would be issuance costs, um, which would have, which will go to various attorneys, et cetera, and yes, Comida would be part of that.
Again, I, I, I didn't hear you say anything that contradicted Mr. Johnson, and it seems like there would be some time to get some additional questions answered. The problem with closing costs, I'm somewhat familiar with this as an attorney, they come after the fact, and, and while I, I understand that, you know, this isn't necessarily district dollars, these are taxpayer dollars that are being used to get these bonds. So I, I, my colleagues, who got a lot more experience in this than I do, suggested, and I think it's a good idea, that we table this, because it did not go to finance, and, you know, maybe there's a few extra questions that we ask, and then it'll just come back here and I'm sure we'll pass.
Sure.
Imagine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I don't have any problems with the resolution, but if, um, if my colleagues feel more comfortable with, if, if it was tabled, I, I don't have any problems with that. This, this, what we decided when, the, the RJSCB is really our agent, um, so technically, we, we said that we wanna see all resolutions, so that way we can give our concurrence on them, and it's important that our colleagues are comfortable, so...
I have a question, though.
Commissioner, um, Elliott.
Yeah, the fifty-seven nine, what is, what is that?
I'm sorry, point of order? Uh, motion to table is on the floor.
I, I didn't know if a motion was made or not, but, but I, I don't know if a motion was made or not.
Was it a suggestion or a motion?
Well, I, I can withdraw to allow Commissioner Elliott to...
All right, so, so, yeah.
And then I'll make it afterwards.
Yeah, he, he didn't make a motion, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Elliott.
Yeah, the fifty-seven million nine hundred, what, what is that, actually?
Right, it goes right to...
Cause you mentioned a hundred and thirty-eight million, but I didn't hear any mention of the fifty-seven.
Right, the CUSB, the, to best my understanding, uh, I think that, uh, the acronym is for qualified schools' construction bonds.
Right.
And several years ago, the state made those available to several districts. Um, again, it was a, it's pretty much for all intents and purposes, um, cheap financing for, uh, to use towards the, um, upkeep of buildings. Our district, um, was awarded in, in two instances, it was, I think, twenty-nine million and twenty, that add up to that fifty-nine million, two years, I think, uh, oh-nine, ten, and ten-eleven. Uh, the district has decided to use those funds towards FMP because it's cheaper than the bond financing.
So the district has money that it's using in the amount of fifty-seven nine?
It's an alloc, yeah, I'm sorry, it's an allocation from the state that, that was available for us to use them, with respect to keeping the cost down, because I think they're either one, uh, percent, um, bonds, which would, again, they're pretty much virtually, very, very close to interest-free, um, uh, bonds, so the most prudent way to use them is, 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 is in, in this for this project.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner White, you wanna make a, a motion to table?
I make a motion to table, uh...
Table, table goes straight to vote, is there a second?
Seven thirteen.
Second.
Second. Um, I'm glad this is brought up, actually, actually, I wanna thank you guys for bringing this earl, up early.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because if it would have been next month, it would have, um, put a, a crimp on things. So, um, motion to table has been moved, it's been seconded, uh, table goes straight to a vote, parliamentary procedures with no discussion, all those in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? All right, the ayes have it, we'll take this back up.
Yeah, so, so let me just, um, ask the process, I mean, is, is this gonna go through finance, and so will it be at the next finance meeting that we will discuss this? Okay, could you just make a note, uh, that I'd like to be at the next finance meeting, so that I understand what I'll be voting on?
Thank you. Um, and, and this is a very important step, because we're very close to breaking ground on this FMP, so, um, anything, yeah, I can't wait till that happens. Anything else between seven hundred and seven twenty-three?
Hearing none.
Um, all those in favor?
Say that again?
Seven hundred through, seven hundred through seven twenty-one, all those in favor?
Okay.
And I know, and if, and we can note the abstentions, um, seven oh-two and seven oh-two, Commissioner Cruz and Elliott will abstain from, seven oh-five, Commissioner Adams will abstain from, and seven oh-eight, Commissioner Evans will, will abstain from. So all those in favor of seven oh-two through seven twenty-one, with the exception of the ones in which I just noted where the Commissioners abstain from, um, all those in favor, please say, uh, aye.
Aye.
And I'm abstaining, I mean, I'm voting no on seven oh-eight, seven oh-nine, seven ten.
Okay, the ayes have it, thank you. Unfinished business from previous meeting?
Mr. President, you had previously talked about seven twenty-two and that it would be done in executive session, if I heard you correct.
Right.
I'm not sure. Why is that being done in executive session? I mean, that doesn't, you know, we've been...
Actually, it doesn't have to be in executive session.
Matter of fact, it would be a mistake for us to do it in an executive session, I think that would, the law doesn't allow that. It's a, it's a discussion about how we're gonna structure ourselves as a committee.
Personnel?
That, it's not, oh, maybe I've misread it, but it's about personnel committee, not about a person.
Organizational structure.
Yeah, yeah. It would have to be about a person for it to be executive session.
Oh, so seven twenty-two is not about people?
No.
No, it's about a, the committee structure. It's about creating a, not a committee.
No, no, it's about restoring the committee.
Well, exactly, but, but it would have to be about a specific person.
Whose resolution is seven twenty-two?
Mine.
Is that Commissioner Elliott?
I don't have a problem with doing it at the DAS.
Okay, Commissioner Elliott, you, I mean, Commissioner White, you're correct, this isn't about, um, I was under the impression that seven twenty-two was about people.
Yeah.
But it's not. Um, Commissioner Elliott, if you just wanna talk a little bit about seven twenty-two?
Thank you, President Evans. I, um, um, part of my own background of organizational development, human, human and organizational development, and, uh, the fact that, I think that, um, um, because two-thirds of our budget is around personnel issues, and it seems as if we don't get an opportunity, um, as a committee or as a board, uh, to really flesh out, if you will, and go into more detail about some of the systemic issues around, um, personnel, also in terms of some of the contracts and questions that some of us may have around the contracts, and it just seems, it seems appropriate, it seems prudent, uh, that this board, given its financial oversight responsibility, uh, would be interested in restoring, um, this committee, um, to ensure that we are taking, uh, a closer look and, and scrutinizing, um, the financial, um, aspects of, of our district. And so, Mr. President, I thought that, again, I thought that it was prudent that, uh, this board restores this committee so that, uh, we're doing our due diligence and that we have a venue by which we can really get into, um, asking some detailed questions around, uh, personnel issues in the district.
Thank you. Um, let me get a motion so we can have discussion on the, on the resolution that Commissioner Elliott just, um, outlined, uh, is there, um, a motion for seven twenty-two for discussion?
To move.
Move to second?
Second.
Second, if you're moving to second, a discussion, Commissioner White.
Yeah, I, you know, um, just so Commissioner Elliott doesn't think I'm doing things unfairly, when I have introduced resolutions like this, after giving remarks like she has, I just asked that it be referred to the appropriate committee. This, to me, would be governance and also policy, and, and, and again, I don't want Commissioner Elliott to think that I want this thing to get tied up in committee, or I'm expecting something different than I would expect for myself. In fact, every time that I've done this, I've said, I think it ought to go this committee, and sometimes it's multiple committees, so I think this ought to be vetted with the appropriate committees, governance governs our structure, and this would clearly be a policy change, so that would be my...
But I, I, yeah, I'd like to, I guess, hear what the other board members, if they like for this to be, go to governance, then I don't have necessarily have any problems with it going to governance.
You, um, you know...
But I think it's an important, um, issue that we have to discuss from this board, and if it means going through the, uh, process, I, I don't have a problem with that happening. I guess I don't understand why it needs to go to policy necessarily, but governance...
I can answer that, Commissioner.
Um, I, I, just one point before I go to you, Commissioner, um, Powell, is, I, I think that, um, this, if, if it was gonna go to committee, I think it definitely should be, um, governance, being that this committee, my understanding is, I was on the board when we had a personnel committee before, my understanding is that there was a personnel committee before?
And, and this is asking for it to be restored?
This is simply asking for it to be restored, so I guess there's some writings, writings places that talks about what this committee did?
I, I was in the board when that happened, um, and I was one that the problem was, uh, the board need to understand, and I'm glad that it's gonna go to a committed, that there are, we have to put a teaching every classroom, we have an obligation, so we can't wait thirty days in certain situation, so, and it used to be very, um, time-consuming, so I could have a discussion about how you can guide this, so that you don't, you can't, excuse my expression, for lack of a better word, tie our hand that we become ineffective in terms of do what we are trying to do, but we can definitely, um, have a discussion about the need, so priority, like, for example, I do know, like, this board is interesting on tenure.
And diversity.
And diversity.
Yeah, those kinds of issues.
And discipline.
And the list goes on, and discipline, and, and, um, that's perhaps, um, you know, and, and, um, an appropriate discussion for this board, but also I wanted to say to you is that, take the issue for, for tenure, for example, and it's something that the Human Capital Office and we can work on and set in the expectation, you know, how do we grant tenure in this district? I mean, those are essential questions and process that are most significant, let's say, that people who don't, I know, intimate engage with the individual to, to have a lot of discussion. So you, you will have an, an infrastructure that support, I guess, what you had tended to do.
Yes.
Again, we, we could talk...
I, I think this definitely can be discussed in governance, and I, and I, um, without, um, I, I, I think the other, uh, the other thing that's, and I, and I think that this resolution, um, and I'm not speaking for Commissioner Elliott, but, but I bet a lot of it is, is born out of a lot of what we've been seeing around incidences and issues that have, that have popped up over the...
Well, I actually have been trying to get this done, I think, a couple of months now, but I've been out, you know, I've had some personal, uh, issues, um, but I actually have seen the need for us to, uh, be able to be more intimate in, in this whole, um, process and, and to give it some oversight.
Right. Um, Commissioner, um, Powell?
Yeah, the, um, the best analogy I can suggest to reinforce what Commissioner White has said is, when there's a finance, an, an idea that would alter a finance policy or initiate a new finance policy, the first place for it to go is the Finance Committee and then to the Policy Committee. What this is really asking for is to change bylaws, uh, the board bylaws, which is Policy twenty-three hundred, so it, we do have a governance committee that determines what, essentially, all of our bylaws changes move through that governance committee, the Policy Committee essentially would just be, um, uh, a final vet in the stage, if you will. So it really should go to governance first.
So I'll, I'll send this over to, um, governance, but, but I think that...
But there's a motion on the floor, and it's tabling or something.
Well, I, I, I could ask somebody to amend the motion that it, that it be sent to governance. Um, I, I think that this, um, when this goes to governance, though, that it might need I, I think that this, when this goes to governance, though, that it might need to be a governance committee meeting of the whole, because this is the type of resolution where the entire board has to make sure that they, that they discuss and have a stake in. So I think that's, that's critically important. And in fact, I, I, I'm hoping that we can schedule a retreat on a Saturday morning in May, and I know that, I'm hoping that part of the retreat can be public, the other part of it can be quote-unquote team-building type stuff. But this is, I think this is something that, that could be discussed, too. Because it's, so that way it's not just two people or three people discussing. I think the whole board should, should commit to being at least involved in the discussion, so that way it's just not the governance committee and three people or two people. Everybody on the board really needs to commit to being a part of the discussion around something, something that's gonna change a bylaw.
Well, Mr. President, I can amend my...
To send it to governance?
To send it to governance. And then if there's a need, because I do hear what Commissioner Paul is saying, I, I do see how, you know, if you go beyond issues respecting diversity, there clearly could be financial implications of this policy, and there could be implications for policy. So I think i- if Commissioner Elliott has her way, and I, I certainly don't object to the idea and think it has merit, this could be a very broad policy and sort of touches many aspects of what we do.
Well, I think that that's why...
And that's why I think it has to be vetted, perhaps not just through governance, but through finance. Because this could, if you, if you were to do this right, it clearly would affect the district's finance. It clearly would affect, if policies relate to diversity. So we ought to really keep the ship tight, and we ought to be coordinated. And so, but my, my motion to table would...
Let me amend.
Motion to amend would send this resolution to governance.
Who asked? Who seconded the motion?
Did I second it?
Did you second the motion? Is that, is that friendly, Commissioner Elliott?
Now, what, what?
That basically just means, are you okay with the...
What did I do?
Are you okay with the, with the amendment?
Yes, 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 I am.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, so the amended motion is that 722 go over to governance for further discussion?
And I think if I could just respond to Commissioner White with respect to that it may go through a number of committees, well, the fact is, if we do a governance meeting of the whole, that's every, that's all of us. And so we can discuss all of those issues, in my mind, in that venue, from that venue, whether it's policy, whether it's finance, you know, we're all members of some committee here, that I think that the governance committee can host, if you will, all of those discussions.
That might be inefficiently to do it.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay? All those in favor of 722 going to governance for further discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. That concludes our resolutions. I'll entertain, before we get into unfinished business, we have none. New business, these are only discussion items. Audit committee policy, internal audit policy, external independent auditor policy, and claims auditor policy. Did these come from the audit committee and the policy committee? So Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Cruz, if you want to speak to these, I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
No.
Cruz time.
No, they're just technical policy submissions that we have to do. So it came out through audit, audit, the review on them, they came to us, we review it on them, and we're suggesting that we pass them tonight.
Okay, for this, for discussion, so we vote on them at the next, we will vote on these policies at the next meeting. Commissioner Adams, I don't know if you wanted to add anything from audit in terms of the policies?
As Commissioner Cruz said, they're straightforward reflections of the work of the audit committee, and they were discussed in the last audit committee that we held, which was a couple months ago, and then forwarded to policy.
Okay, thank you. So those are for discussion items. Anybody got anything they want to add or change? I looked at them, they're pretty standard in nature. We will vote on those next meeting. We have dispense with all of our speakers. Our next meeting is May 24th at, is that the right, that's not the right date?
22nd.
The meeting has been changed to the 22nd.
The meeting has been changed to 22nd.
May 22nd, 2012, at 6:30. And we, I'll entertain a motion to go into an executive session.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of executive session?
Aye.
Aye, reluctantly. Executive session.